Okay, good morning. We'll call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda is approval of our agenda for the day. So, I have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard, saying none, approval of to pay bills and vouchers.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the bills and vouchers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Approve minutes of the February 3rd and 10th county board meetings.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Well, first item is a departmental update for veterans' service, but Tom isn't here yet, so might as well do our committee reports. Wayne, you wanna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Thursday, February 12th, I was at the Clay County Soil and Water Conservation District Board meeting. Our general business went over services that are provided by the district, discussed having an off-year audit. The Soil and Water Conservation District is audited every two years as of now. Approved in agreement with Pheasants Forever. Clean Water Fund application has been approved by the state for Clay-Becker County Soil and Water Districts in the amount of over $300,000. We brought up and discussed the cellphone compensation recommendation. We'll come to the board at next month's meeting, and Jenny will be there to say yes or no. That's all I have.
Thank you. Wayne?
Yeah, Thursday, we had, I was at the University of Minnesota interviews. We interviewed for that part-time, 4-H position. I think we came up with a very good candidate. Hope hopefully everything works out with background checks and stuff like that, so that worked out good again. Finally got a good candidate, it looks like. We've been working on that for a while. An executive committee with FMCOG, everyone over there, we're hiring a senior planner there. We offered a position there to a senior planner and pretty much was involved Highway tracking, that was Tuesday, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Get that then.
After the board meeting?
Yeah, we went to highway tracking and there we discussed a lot on vehicles, purchase of vehicles, trying to come up with a different way, I think, to depreciate them out and stuff like that. Also, there's still been some discussion with working with Wilken County and doing some stuff with them. Let's see, what else? I had another meeting. Oh, I went Friday afternoon, I went out to the highway department where they met with the townships, where they came up with the new rates for this year. I think they're gonna be $828 a mile. It looked like everybody is agreeable with that and was a very good meeting. Very good attendance from townships. They really attended well. I mean, it was just a good attendance there from the townships. There's a full house there. Then Saturday, we had the legislative training session. I'm not training, but met with the legislators that all of us were at, I guess. That's it.
Thank you. Kevin?
Want to put on Tom?
Yeah, let's do our, might as well get our reports anyway.
All right. I had, as Frank mentioned, I had the highway tracking meeting, and we did talk about the township contract and getting ready for the meeting that Frank went to on Friday afternoon, talking about the new rates for 2015. We talked some more about the sharing of our engineer with Wilken County. We talked about some more with the Holly Shop, potentially, you know, turning that over and looking at someplace else for us. There's a use by the Holly Fire Department for that area, so we're trying to work that out. Nathan and Dave have been working hard on putting some prices together on some things for that. Then the only other thing that I did have was the meeting with the farmers on Saturday morning, going over the real estate tax issues that have been in dispute by the ag community and they've just been, there was the real change in valuations which brought up their taxes considerably higher than anybody else. And then, of course, the legislative forum meeting with the legislators and talking about our goals that would be important for us at the legislative session, so I thought it was a good day. And I do, I do think that all of those ag producers that were in attendance for that meeting Monday, or Saturday morning, were really pleased, not only that we had the meeting, but they were pleased at the discussion that was taking place. And hopefully something good will come out of that. We're gonna meet again in a month, so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Jenny?
I didn't have any committees. I did, however, with the Soil and Water Conservation, was invited to be a history DA judge at Holly, and so on Thursday, I was able to do that with some of the other members of the community, and they did a great job. And then the legislative update on Saturday.
Thank you. Let's see, I had Grand Farm Ward EDC last week. Here's some promotional things they've got going, if you want to look at for some of the new things they have out dealing with workforce issues, trying to recruit people to our area. Had a lot of discussions, some interesting things about attracting business, and one of the problems now, besides workforce issues, is the cost of construction apparently has gone sky-high in the region, and so a lot of potential businesses are backing off because of the bids that are coming in for their projects, so that was interesting. Had a beyond the Yellow Ribbon meeting. I think things are going well there. We talked about a fundraiser they're going to be having to help raise funds for honor flights for Korean and Vietnam veterans to Washington, D.C. Yesterday, had an MRCC meeting on the transportation issues that we're dealing with right now with the legislature, and we've got a strategy we're working on and trying to involve as many rural Minnesota counties as possible to lobby the legislature to get more funding for transportation out here. Also met on Saturday with the farmers and the tax issues and with our legislators, and that was it for me. Tom and Jennifer, come on up. Good morning. We have an update on our Veterans Service Office today.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good.
We're happy to be here.
And so are we.
That was true. I say everything seriously.
Well, thank you for having us to be able to come here. We don't come probably enough to give you updates as they happen, but we're gonna give you kind of a year-end review as to what we've been doing and the progress that we've been making in 2014. Currently, I have a staff of 1.5 members. In addition to that, the paid staff, we have 19 volunteers that assist us in various different ways. Some, most work in the office and some work outside of the office for us. And Jennifer, how many do we currently have that are here? Because some go south for the winter and...
About 13 or 14.
So we got 13 or 14 that we can rotate in and out throughout the afternoons here, and that's typically what we see, especially in the wintertime, because a lot of them like to go to Florida or someplace. With the 1.5-member staff, we have worked hundreds of claims, whether they are federal claims, state claims, or nonprofit claims. Each time we achieve a positive outcome on a claim, not only does it provide for the veteran and his or her family, but in addition, it takes an enormous burden from other county departments such as social services. We currently support the claims and needs of those within our borders, which our automated system, VIMS, indicates that we now have a caseload management of over 12,500 veterans. But significant about that, you know, you see the size of the staff, the size of the caseload, is the Veterans Service Office caseload is different from other departments. It's a lifetime management of the case. There's not a finite date where it starts and a finite date where it ends. And even often when the veteran dies, we go on to provide benefits to the widows or the dependents, so it's a lifelong management of the case. Unless that veteran moves out of Clay County, but usually when we do, it seems, for everyone we lose, it seems like we get two more in. So, in addition to, this was a huge achievement, in addition to finishing our digitizing process at almost no expense to the county, both Jennifer and I are now qualified and established to be able to obtain direct access from our county computers into the federal and VA computers so as to identify the status of a veteran's claim. Never could do that before. We didn't have the permissions, the, even the hardware, the software, everything, nothing was in line for that. And the first process for us was to get our hard files down to where we can digitize them into the system. The systems themselves that we buy every year have to be designed to be able to do that with the VA. And then you have to go through a lot of security training and clearances before you can actually tap into another system like the VA's and actually, so now Jennifer and I could go in if somebody calls up and says, "I'd like to find out what's going on." We no longer have to pick up the telephone and call two, three departments. We can go right to that person's claim and find out what's going on with it.
Did you have to go through some security?
A lot, yeah. And it's, I tend to get behind in it a little bit because it's so secure that it's like every 30 days, if you're not in so many files, they bump you out and you gotta get a new password, and then you gotta get more training and stuff like that, but it's all for the right reasons. We have prepared ourselves for this, not only with the hardware and the software and training and the accreditation, to be able to do both, but this also clears the path for us when the VA decides that on a particular date and time, we don't know when that will be, that they are no longer going to accept paper claims. And we know that date is coming, and we know it's coming soon. So I guess I'm telling all of you is that we're ready. Our office is ready. We're waiting for them to say, "No more paper claims." So, and that will make a difference in a little more speed. It's also gonna make a difference in what we spend in postage or mail going, hard papers going, you know, in and out of the office. We have been also fortunate to work with our Commissioner Wangen, the Commissioner of Veterans Affairs, North Dakota, so as to be granted the opportunity to sign an MOU, which under his authority, we can access veterans' military records. Now, I just talked about VA records. Now I'm talking about military records. This system we acquired from the Commissioner is called DEPRES, the Defense Personnel Records Information Retrieval System. Being that this is a pilot program and the Commissioner himself is our sponsor, we are paying $0 to have this access. I'm gonna give them a little bit example. You use DEPRES more than I do.
If we have a veteran come in who had service in the 1990s or later, we can go online into DEPRES, make a request for that veteran's record, and then it's electronically scanned in by their service branch. So, within a few hours or a day at most, an email pops up for us that we can access it. And then we can save it right up to VIMS, so there's no printing at all, and we have access to their personnel file and their discharge, their DD-214.
And until, before that happened, before that agreement that we got, how long would it take to acquire a veteran's military records?
Three to eight weeks from the National Archives.
Sometimes even longer. So, we're really have a great gratitude toward Commissioner Lonnie Wangen of North Dakota for allowing us to do that and absolutely free. Within this past year, all of our staff has undergone training of various types. Jennifer has been undergoing training at the VA, as well as she went to the VSO basic training, trip training, and finally, well, you're gonna have to explain trip here in a minute. It's not like going on a trip. And finally, the week-long national accreditation training. Bonnie, although she's only a half-time employee, she has attended local training that we have put together with the assistance of the VA to help us be more observant for potential veteran suicidal indicators. Bonnie also took part in our annual veteran volunteer training and through a grant system has taken higher-level computer classes being held at the Morehead Community Schools. These courses were taught in the evening and paid for by a grant from the Department of Veterans Affairs, Minnesota. Do you want to tell them just a snapshot of trip?
It's online training and took, I can't remember how many hours, but I felt like I did it full-time for a week. And it's basically VA security systems and privacy practices, things of that nature, with quizzes.
This past year, we sent Jennifer to travel to the very active Veterans Court in Minneapolis, Hennepin Counties. A few years ago, I went down there and took the whole day with the court. And of course, now Jennifer sits as one of the participants in the Clay-Becker Veterans Court. So we're happy that that's moving along, you know, is making some headway. And as this continues to build, this will surely be a great asset, not only to our particular department, but I believe to the entire community. In addition, we have been very successful last year in obtaining ample grants from the State of Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs, which we were able to utilize not only for training purposes, but also to better prepare our office with modernization. And if you come down, we'll show you, you know, where some of those monies were spent in updating our office. And here's, we're gonna kind of segue into the PowerPoint. Our morale support activities within our staff and our volunteer staff, as well as our partners from the local veteran organizations, can best be portrayed by a quick view of our PowerPoint presentation. Those are all very good-looking people there, aren't they? You all come down to the Commissioners' Day, we appreciate that. The lady up on the very top there with Dan Hunt, she is the VA Medical Center Director, and she's very good. We really do appreciate her. First-ever Veterans Conference. We're so proud of that. Nowhere else in Minnesota do they have a Veterans Conference. So we started that last fall, and we hope to continue it. And that's the, going back for a second, that was the outline of the speakers that, you know, and what we did during that conference.
It was very impressive.
Thank you, thank you. Starting to set it up. Go back there, go back one slide. You can see, we do have a little fun. So, part of that morale. Go back one more. Just notice that where some of these folks came from, Tony Labida, Minnesota Department Veterans Affairs, drove all the way up from the Twin Cities to give his portion on the state's programs for veterans. The Yellow Ribbon paid for everybody's lunch that day. We were fortunate to get a commander from every organization, every veterans' organization to come and represent their organization and tell everybody a little bit about what they do. And again, being that this is the first Veterans Conference, I thought that was important, to get all of the leadership from the veteran organizations there. Yeah, we mentioned we have a little fun down there once in a while. That kind of shows you what happens when the boss has a birthday party. And then we're says morale days out at the range. We really do, I take a vacation day on a Friday usually, and I go out with several of the volunteers that do like to, you know, keep qualified, and as we like to call it. And my daughter's up there too, so she's learning how to shoot targets too. It's a fun time. It's a fun time out there. Every year, we get an invitation to go to the commissioning, and it's a very honorable ceremony that takes place. And if you ever get an invitation, you should go. It's quite a nice ceremony, for lack of better words, and we have a good, very good partnership with the ROTC over there. I think you guys know, we've talked about it before, that they've created what they call the Snow Angels for both Morehead and Snow Angels for Fargo. And those ROTC cadets, they have the list of disabled veterans, and they don't have to be called. They just go out there in their vehicles and take care of their driveways You see the amount of hours that is donated to the county by our volunteers, and they all bring different backgrounds and skills, so we're very fortunate. Just go through this part fast, until you get to Mike. Know that guy?
You know, I thought he was banned from this building.
He's in the building next door.
Yeah, our good old former Commissioner, Mike.
You know, that person?
Yes, Carol.
One of our, who is. So...
She's volunteering there now?
She is.
Good for her.
So her brother's training her in.
Oh.
Yeah.
They do get one. They do get one.
They do. Yeah, yeah. So, as you can see, I think we had a very successful year in the Veterans Service Office, and, you know, we had good support, good morale support, and, you know, we're lining up our goals and starting to tackle them already for 2015. So, do you have any questions for Jennifer or I?
Just, I want to thank you guys, you and Jennifer and Bonnie, for what you do. And please, I know I speak for the Commission, but I extend our thanks to all the volunteers too, because we really do appreciate what they do and understand what they do, so please do that.
What's, what is the status of the Veterans Court? Is that, is that fully operational now?
They're doing a pilot.
Okay.
Right now, with one veteran going through the court.
Okay, okay. And is that Judge Lawson's handling it? As you know, it kind of, we kind of went back a year after Lisa left, but it's gaining footage again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We knew that it was, and I think, I'm pretty sure we had funding in there, or did we miss it? I just haven't heard anything lately on where it's at, so.
I know when I, I went down to Minneapolis several years ago to actually take part and to sit on and take part in the Veterans Court there. I kind of liked the idea, but I wanted to keep an open mind and see how things went, and I was just so incredibly impressed.
Good.
It really truly, they call it the Solutions Court, and it really truly is just that. So, hopefully we can have a very similar model here.
Oh, good.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes, thank you.
Steve, come on up. Next on our agenda is a request to fill a full-time council position due to a resignation at the West Central Regional Juvenile Detention Center. Steve Larsen, good morning, Steve.
Good morning. As you mentioned, we recently had a resignation in our secure unit. Just gonna power that down. It's a little bit distracting. An employee who's been with us for a period of time accepted a full-time job in the Clay County Federal Probation Department, which left an opening in our juvenile center. I think, as we'll hopefully talk about here in a little bit, the things have been very, very busy over at the juvenile center, and I think that there's justification to fill that position. Due to the fact that the person's been with us for such a long period of time, even after paying out their benefits, we'll be looking at a savings of about $6,500 of hiring somebody on at step one, so.
Questions for Steve?
I move to approve the request. Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? We're not gonna make that easy on him this morning.
Good work.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
All right. The second part of my request deals with our, with our population. As you guys know, January 2nd of this year, we began taking on Cass County and other smaller North Dakota counties, which has certainly had an impact on our, on our budget. This past year, we had completed a budget, and then as this Fargo, our North Dakota possibility came forward, we ended up coming up with a second budget that had the possibility of hiring up to six full-time staff to deal with the increased numbers. This board approved us to hire four, four of those six, and we had them ready to go by January 2nd. Our numbers have been much higher than what we'd anticipated, I think, and it's not just due to North Dakota. I think our Minnesota numbers have been very high since we began this process. And we're looking at adding, adding one of those additional staff today, or requesting that, to help deal with the increased population and programming issues that we're having, so.
Questions?
So, I, my question is, we're saving $6,500 on this, due to this resignation?
Correct.
Is there the extra allotment in your budget? Are you needing an increased budget for this position?
No. We do have additional two positions that we budgeted for.
Okay.
So that it is within our, the budget that we're, that we currently had approved by this board.
The plan was, was to hire when the need was really there.
Correct.
To kind of monitor what was going on, to see what...
And I think what we anticipated, we were gonna be probably in the low, maybe mid twenties when we, when we were real busy, and we've been averaging, this morning, we're at 28.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, when we, when we did that, I mean, going from six new ones was a lot.
Yes.
And, and we were taking our bed population from a potential maximum of 24 to 30. However, we had been running in the area for a long time. We were, we were lucky to be at our 17.25, right?
Correct.
So, so the staff was adequate for that. The only, you know, and I certainly want to give you everything that we need to make sure that you're operating, you know, especially to the requirements of the Department of Corrections.
Right.
And we don't want to get into any trouble with our licensing there. I just, I just question whether one month and a couple of weeks is significant enough time to hire something on a permanent basis. It's an awful short time to trend something for something long-term. And I don't know, you know, I would like to say, use that money within your budget... And I don't know, you know, I, I would like to say, use, use that money within your budget to the best of your ability, would be what I'd like to tell you to do.
Right.
Where I, where I, where my concern would be is, this, this is just, just such a blip in time of what we've seen, because we've seen that center go from as low as 11 to 12 for long periods of time, to now high. And what happens if it goes down, back down to that 11 or 12?
Right.
And then now we've got that much more staff that's full-time, and as we know, once they're there, it's, it's hard to, to do anything about that. So I, I know, it's a, it's a dilemma that we have.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know that I have the answer, I'm throwing it out there maybe for the rest of my commissioners here.
How many counselors, I mean, how many people does one counselor ha, handle?
Well, it really, it really varies, you know, we, we have a treatment program, which we have counselors that are assigned to that, we have detention, detention staff that deal specifically with the detention kids, so it really varies based on our, our numbers there. But just to kind of give you guys a, just a little snippet of kind of what we're facing with the increase, this morning, on the day, this is our day shift calendar, we have, we have a court, court hearing here at Clay County at 8:30, Becker County at 9:30, two at Cass County at 8:30, and again at 1:00. We have a Becker, an Ottertail, and a Stevens, plus a dentist appointment and a Lakeland Mental Health appointment, all of which are, are sick staff during the day shift are, are going to be trying to make sure that we can fill. So, and that's, that's been very, a pretty similar day for our, for our staff. So what we're adding, adding positions, we certainly have had additional duties based on those, those numbers.
Kenny?
I, I agree with what Kevin is saying, however, I feel like the trend is that it is going to go up, and I, I don't think that we should overload these variable hour employees by, I mean, if, if there is a savings that you're going to have within your budget, you know, what's going to be the cost if we overload these employees and they quit, and all of a sudden we have to find new ones? So I, there's a, there are a point where we need to take care of these employees as well.
The, the other piece is Commissioner Campbell, is that in the event that we do, our numbers do drop, those variable hour positions, we can, we can also take away those hours.
Okay.
So we would be able to see a savings there.
So, so you, in addition to the, the, excuse me, these, these six new full-time positions that we already basically agreed to in your 2015 budget, we had money in there for these other types of workers within your budget?
Correct, yes.
So, so if, so those dollars then could be saved in the event that the numbers went down?
Yes.
Well, that, that's good, I, I just, you know, and I think for, for the new commissioners here, and I, because I, because I think, I think probably all of them with the exception of Grant, well, I think maybe Wayne was here at that time too, but, but we were operating so low in terms of the amount of kids in that facility, we were really scrambling to figure out how we're going to keep the place open.
I'm sure.
You know, and, you know, and that, and in, in the scheme of time, that was what, just two and a half years ago?
Yeah.
You know, so that's what I, that's why I talk about, this is such a small snippet in time, but, but I agree with Commissioner Mojo that, that maybe, you know, I, I don't have a problem with getting, getting that one more, Wayne, I, I don't, I, I just...
I understand, yeah.
Just thinking about it.
Wayne?
Does this go through committee?
Well, we, we discussed it earlier at, at the, the board, that is made up of commissioners from all the participating counties, so it was approved by them, so...
What was, what was approved was the agreement to do the six new.
Yeah.
You know, with the idea in mind that they would come on if needed, so...
Well, I think from the conversation I've heard, plus the concerns that I've heard, then I'm going to move, let me grant this request at this time.
Got a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and second. Further discussion? I would, you know, the numbers here, like you said, 28 today, I mean, you know, I, I don't know if we'll stay at that number, I mean, we'll probably fluctuate, but I don't think there's any question that we're going to, based on having Cass County now as a partner, that we're going to have considerably higher numbers than we've been used to dealing with over the past five, six years, so...
Yes.
So I, so I, I think that, you know, given that, I think it justifies right now the additional position. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I, I do agree with that, and I, my, my concern too, at this point, with the trend that's been there, is that we, the other side of that is that we also need to make sure that we have adequate space for all of our member counties and, and the number of, of kids that they've actually spoken for or paid for to have in our facility. So I think you heard me also talk here, or give a report to this board not too long ago, about the need to even consider redoing some of your facility to make more room. So, so I, I do understand that other component of it, that, that it could go the other way too, and we, you know, as, as both our community grows and as, as we now have Cass County on, I do agree that there's probably more likelihood that we're going to have more rather than less.
Yes.
Especially with the other part of this, is that with our current programs in place, judges have been more inclined to want those children to come to our facility.
Yeah.
That wasn't the case also two and a half years ago, so there's been major strides in that way. So, you know, it's just, my underlying concern obviously is that we don't want to have a lot of employees and no kids there.
Right.
But I, I think we're on our track, so...
Okay, we've got a motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Steve, one quick, what is our capacity, 28?
Our capacity's now 30.
30.
So we've been, we have not, we had a couple of close scares, but we haven't turned any of our, our member counties down to this stage, so we're, we're restricting our usage of non-member, non-member people at this point, so...
And Commissioner Gross, one, one of the things, Commissioner Wayland and I, who serve on that regional committee, we, we did talk with Steve, and we kind of had a subcommittee meeting with him, and we have asked them to start researching how we could take advantage of maybe part of the second floor, which is currently now non-secure, and turning that into a secure area for beds. So they're in the process of putting that stuff together.
Okay, very good.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Dave, come on up. Hobble on up here, so...
Getting better.
Yeah, you don't have crunches today, so...
He's got them, buddy.
Oh, you got them, but you can make it up to an arm, that's good.
I'll be supposed to use them.
That's good. Okay.
Got quite the list today, I guess.
First thing is a request to acquire Highway Shop in Holly.
This is in request to some meetings we had with the committee, the Holly Emergency Response Team Committee, wanting a little, a little more formal commitment from the county in the form of a letter of intent that we were wishing to work for them. We did discuss this several times, and we've met with them with the Highway Committee. I think the committee kind of felt that it should be approved by the board, that we do approve this letter of intent and then come from Brian Berg. So I, actually, Brian kind of put the letter together a little bit, and just wanted to get your guys' feelings on it and approval, that I think generally, we are very excited to move forward with them. There's a lot of things we got to get in place yet, we, we got to get the land, you know, kind of secured up with, with our alternate, and we're working on that. We're working, we did meet with the, a family that has a nice parcel that worked good for us, it's about two and a half, two and three-quarter mile south of Holly, right on our P, County Route 31. We met with them, and they were pretty excited, they're interested what the valuation would be, so we're proceeding forward with an appraisal on the property. So that's looking good. We, we've discussed some shop layouts on how we would, what we would build, if we would move forward, and I think our, our last time we did it was down in Barnesville, we would probably do a real similar, maybe a little bit smaller, because we don't have four people working out there, we would have two full-time and two part-time, so it'd be a little bit scaled down version. But it's, it's pretty exciting times, and I think it would, it would meet our needs real good. They more than likely would acquire our property and tear it down and start over to meet their needs as well, so we drafted a little letter, does everyone have a copy of the letter? I think Jenny also read and approved it as well, so...
Discussion?
Well, I, again, this is, goes through our Highway Tracking Committee, and we've, we've been dealing with this for quite some time. I know the Holly Fire Department had, and that group, the group of people have shown extreme interest, and we think as moving forward for the improvement of our highway facilities and operations in the eastern part of the county, this could also turn out to be a, a very good deal for us and for that part of the county, for, for just logistically being able to work it better. So, so it, it's, it's a good thing until we, you know, the, our committee did support sending this letter.
Yeah.
You know, however, it isn't saying that we're, this is a done deal yet, right? Because we, we still have a lot of numbers to, to crunch and, and to make it fiscally reasonable for all parties to do. But it's, it's, this is a step in the right direction.
Okay, so you're looking for approval of the letter?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to send the letter.
I'll second it.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries.
Item number two is a request to replace some equipment for our 2015 request, I guess. Does everybody get a copy of the spreadsheet with? We run this through the Highway Committee on two different occasions, and the biggest thing, and it's been something we've tried to take a look at, is looking at an Internal Service Fund spreadsheet, as well as the balance and impact on what these vehicles are going to do. We're looking at replacing three pickups in the engineering fleet, two survey vehicles in the engineering fleet, and then one in the maintenance side, it'd be a regular cab pickup in our maintenance fleet. So altogether, I guess it's four pickups and two survey vehicles. The Internal Service Fund, I believe, on a initial balance will be in the black, we do have enough funds in there to replace them all, but there will be an impact in the future to the Internal Service Fund. We've got the Auditor's Office on trying to make, there is a few errors on there, and it's on service life and how it gets put together, and we've got a, a good plan moving forward on that to try to minimize impacts. Some, some equipment, it doesn't, it doesn't fiscally make sense to put salvage value in there, because we keep them so long, by the time we're done, it's a $500 value, it's almost nominal, minimal, whatever. Some vehicles, we do replace after we use them for five years, and there is a pretty good salvage value, like the survey vehicles, one's got $9,000 of salvage, and one's got 12. So not putting that in there then makes, at the end of the year, we're, we're putting too much money in there, so we're trying to balance that out. So on the ones that are short, that got amortized over 13 years, it was too long, and there's not enough money, so anyway, I guess we're, we are moving forward on correcting that spreadsheet, and all the vehicles are state bid vehicles, and I think the vendor number is shown there, most of them are coming from Nelson Auto Center out of Fergus Falls. We bought several vehicles there before, and it's been, it's been a good, good vendor. The one regular cab pickup is coming out of Midway Ford, and that's just a, it's a three-quarter ton Ford regular cab pickup.
Okay, questions?
Again, this goes through the Highway Tracking, so I have to respond to it, or as a member of the committee, you know, the goal on this is that Dave's annual budget includes a line item for investment into the Internal Service Fund, based on his fleet of vehicles, whether they're pickups, graders, plow trucks, whatever the case may be. And what our goal is, annually, we put enough money in there so that when these things come due, the difference between the price of the new vehicle that we're buying and the trade-in, the dollars are there, an Internal Service Fund, not to be more dollars, not to be less dollars, but to be the right amount of dollars, and that's the formula that we're trying to improve on. But these vehicles are needed, it's the right time, and our committee recommends approval.
Okay, board's wishes?
I would suggest our member of the committee make the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
And I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Number three, Dave.
Item number three is approval of our annual maintenance contract dollar value. Our highway accountant put the numbers together, this year, again, was a little bit more work than some years, because the first half of the year had 26 townships and a certain amount of miles, and then the second half of the year had one more township, so she had to basically do the whole spreadsheet twice. We did meet with this on Highway Committee, and we went through it quite extensively, talking about our cost of our plow trucks and depreciation, and how we were looking and analyzing it, and I think we felt very comfortable that we're continuing to do it right. Nothing changed from the last at least one or two years. And then on Friday, the 13th, which was kind of an odd day, because I'm superstitious, but we did have a meeting with the townships, we brought them all in, and probably had more people than we ever had. It was, it was a little short notice for them, but yet there was a lot of people that showed up. Frank was there, and Brian Berg was there, you know, Kevin had a commitment, and I explained that he did want to be there, but we had hit a prior commitment, but it was a good discussion. They didn't ask a lot of questions, but nothing changed from previous years, I think they were curious to see how things were going to go. The numbers did drop from last year. Last year's, and I call them raw numbers, because that's before we do a five-year average. We, we are now doing a five-year average to keep things constant, but last year's raw numbers were 898 per mile, now this year's was 828 with the combined, the two sets, the first half, second half. So it did go down $70 per mile, which I expected, because the, the winter was a little light, we spent $70,000 less on fuel in '14 than we did in 2013, so those numbers should have gone down. The one thing to note is, we, we did do a little bit more work in the summer, which is, if you're plowing less snow, you're probably blading more gravel, because of the seasons the way they are. So we did blade 444 more hours on the road, which is what they like to see, they want to see us out on the road, because we're, they're, they're hiring us, and we did plow 996 less hours with the plows and the blades, so, you know, we had less snow and a little easier winter, so we were out plowing less, thus saving a lot of money. So after we do the five-year average, it brings it down to 809 per mile, and then with the inflationary factor, being the fact that we're basically fronting these 2014 costs up until June of this year, so we won't see a dime of that money until June 1st, when we start billing them. So for 18 months, we're kind of forwarding or fronting the costs, so we thought it would only applicable a couple of years ago to add an inflationary factor, which brings it to 821 per mile.
And the, and the townships are happy with this system, aren't they? I mean, compared to what we used to do, so...
Maybe I'd best say they were not unhappy.
Okay, well, it's maybe happy isn't the right word.
It was a good meeting, and I didn't come up with any question on it, they didn't review anything, and I think you gave them good examples of how the costs are arrived at, and as far as I could tell from the meeting, it was good.
Going back to when Commissioner Waller was here, and we, we worked on this formula, it's taken us a number of years, but all throughout the time that I look at the history of the Highway Track, we've always tried to build them based on the actual costs. And I think right now, we are as close to that with this formula as we can possibly be. So, you know what, we're not always happy with the price that we pay annually for the county's portion of it either, but it is what it is. You know, oil prices go up, you still have to go out there and, and pay the price of fuel.
Yeah.
This particular year, we happened to, like you said, we, it actually dropped $70 a mile in, in actual cost of, but when we use the, the five-year average to lessen the blow, you know, that's, that's, it's a good deal, so...
Okay, more questions?
I would, I would move approval of the requested...
I'll second the motion.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Number four, Dave.
Number four is the approval to advance our stated allotment into our 2016 amount. The state wants this number a little earlier, because we do have to make a bond payment out of our stated allotment. Right now, we've got $981,000 in our account, I think we, we received 2.8 million for 2014. After we pay back what we advanced last year, our balance today is 981, but we have to make a $1,025,000 bond payment, so they want us to get these resolution forms a little earlier. If it weren't for that bond payment, I would normally be doing these after we do our bid openings, because then we can see where we're going to be at. There's a resolution form, and then there's a request to reserve advance funding form that I signed, but I believe Lori, based on our approval today, would sign on the actual resolution. So what I put together is our, our two projects, our two paving projects, being County Route 18, County Route 52, and then I show our bond payment. The actual number is quite a bit more than what we're showing as far as needing, but we can only advance 90% of our allotment, which is 2.589 million, you can see there. The difference, you can see we're going to be short, comes from... The difference, you can see we're going to be short, comes from our bond monies that sitting in the banks. So, we still, we do still have money for that. It's going to be pretty tight this year. We're hoping our bids do not come in bad. We're a little worried about that based on what we're seeing for other counties' bids, but cross our fingers, and we're getting the plans. One set of plans went through the state last week. The other set of plans should be sent to them this week, probably today or tomorrow. As soon as we get them back, we'll be getting approval from this board to go to advertising and open bids, so probably mid to late March is when we'll be opening these two. But we need to get these resolution forms into the state so we can get that bond paid.
I think the longer we wait on getting those bids going, the more it's going to be, so it's critical to get that done.
Okay, the board's wishes on the resolution.
I'd move approval of the advance. Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Number five, Dave.
Okay, last item is the annual resolution that we do every year, and this is for the monies that we pay the cities to include the city of Moorhead for them maintaining our roads on their, in their, within their city limits. So, you can see they've got all, we've got all the smaller cities there in their dollar amounts. Lori puts this together based on a formula that she has. It's the one that she, we do every year, I guess, so if we get approval on that, we could get them paid. I believe the, some of the funds have come through on the state, some of the, our gas tax monies and our town road monies and things are coming, so we'd like to get them their money here in the annual, in the spring like we do.
Mr. Chair, quick question. Does this, do these funds have anything to do with the wheelage tax that Kevin made a motion for?
This is separate.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I will move this request by date.
You have a motion?
I will second with a, just a follow-up explanation for you. Wayne, what these payments are for, for example, with the city of Moorhead, we have, we have miles of county road within the city that they maintain for us.
Okay.
And so, we pay them to do that.
The reason I ask is when we act to accept that wheelage tax, you want so much to go to each.
Yeah, that's a separate.
We can talk about that on another day.
That's a separate. Of course.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Thanks, Dave. Okay, let's see. We've got a closed session, attorney-client issue, so come on up, ladies.
We need to close. We need to close this session.
I know. Okay, we've got a motion to close.
Second.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. We're back in session, and we just completed a closed session with our attorneys on a legal matter. The board's wishes based on that session?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read the following resolution. Be hereby resolved by the Board of Commissioners Clay County that a settlement of litigation in SF versus Clay County and Clay County Social Services, which is memorialized and mediated settlement agreement between the parties and agreed to by our insurance carrier, MCIT, is hereby made. Clay County will issue full payment of its portion of the settlement to its insurance carrier, the Minnesota Counties Intergovernmental Trust, in the amount of $27,500.
Okay, do we have a, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
Excuse me, Wayne, second. Who motioned?
Wayne did, yes.
Wayne motioned?
No. Kevin did.
Okay, thank you. Are you sleeping? No.
Okay, back to our regular agenda, and the last thing we have, I think, is an update by Brian.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Many of the things have been already addressed. Highway tracking, I attended the veterans' staff meeting last week. The egg meeting was mentioned for Saturday morning. The legislative board meeting has been, legislators and board meeting has been mentioned for Saturday morning. Did some work on, and you guys have a copy of that after Saturday morning, the bill, the legislation that we were hoping to pursue for the jail funding and then some soil boarding locations. We've coordinated some of that. We'll be meeting with the engineer there this week. And then I have, Jenny, I think you gave me this, or Commissioner Mojo gave me this, and what it is, the, I'll call it the Weed Inspectors Association has passed a resolution in their supporting some legislation for a million-dollar funding and from the state legislature to help with the county egg inspection duties in the various counties around the state. And what they're asking for is the county commissioners to contact AMC to communicate support for this bill. So, I guess what, I would like to see you folks just on a consensus vote or whatever is to ask me to contact AMC and express your support for this bill, if you'd like to do that.
We have a motion to that effect.
I make a motion to that effect.
Welcome.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
That's it. Anything else?